Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, May 9, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners to order. Could you please take the roll?
Commissioner Durancheck.
Here.
Krieger.
Yes.
Begic.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Do you have any motion to excuse Commissioner Lutz?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Herrick.
Here.
Six yeas, one excused.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon asking that you will bless this session of the county commission. Lord, we ask that you will give to its members the courage of their own conviction, that they might work for the common good of all, with the strength and confidence placed in them by election to office. May your divine providence guide our county and bring dignity, prosperity, respect, and order to every citizen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoorah. First up on the agenda, Minnesota 4/11/17. Motion approved.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, citizen input. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to step forth and speak your piece to the commission and the public in general, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone at all. Okay, seeing that, we'll be on to petitions and communications. First on the agenda, the Bay City Civitan Club, the 60th anniversary, resolution number 2017-83. Need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't believe there's anyone here from the Civitan Club, is there? We'll have this presented to them. Thank you. Next on the agenda, United Way, the Alice Report. That will be postponed until a further date. You still haven't seen it? Nope? Okay, so we're not even, we won't even receive that this time. Next up, Chris Pinter. You will have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to provide the commission an update. Approximately a year ago, I came and talked to you about some proposed boilerplate for fiscal year 17. It was called Section 298. And essentially, that boilerplate would transfer approximately 98 percent of the communal health funding to private interests, primarily Medicaid health plans. And this commission, I'm proud to say, was one of the first statewide that actually went on record with a resolution opposing that change. It was filed with the state, oh, it would have been mid-February of 16. So I'm pleased to say that, a year later, the administration did back off on that original language, thanks to the advocacy of lots of people receiving services, lots of county commissions, and primarily, the lieutenant governor took a personal interest in this as a parent of a child with a disability. And he formed a work group comprised of about 120 individuals statewide to evaluate the integration of behavioral and physical health services and to determine whether the original language proposed by the administration last year would be in the best interests of the state moving forward. I'm also pleased to point out in your information I left for you that I have the executive summary, or portions of the executive summary, from the governor's report. It was finalized in March of this year. It's available online on the Department of Health and Human Services website. But I wanted you to kind of see that the feedback from the public in relation to that last year, I believe, led to a more effective process and a much more thoughtful recommendation. And in fact, in your packet, you'll see, I highlighted a few things. There were statewide affinity groups that included more than 1,000 people providing feedback and input into the policy discussion. We had, actually, had one at Saginaw Valley University last October, which was well-attended by the tri-county area, but in particular, by residents from Bay County. And they eventually, working through the fall and into December of last year, came up with some recommendations related to this integration issue. And I highlighted a few things, just for you to look at, but they're, in general, they talked about trying to implement changes that would not require statutory or legal law changes. And one of the things that the commissions pointed out uniformly was that introducing a third part, a private interest, into the relationship between the state and county for communal health services after 53 years would essentially be, would require a statutory change. And so I was pleased to see that the work group acknowledged that, and in fact, in their very first recommendation, saying they would recommend not taking policy positions that would require legal changes. They also talked about, because they received about 43 proposals related to financing of the mental health system, including number four, from me, so if you ever go online to the website, it's number four. It has my name right on there. They received so many of those, they recommended that this work group continue to work with stakeholders. And stakeholders, they identify as providers, parents, and persons who depend on mental health services, to continue to work on that and come up with models and ways to move this forward in a much more effective process. I included a couple of the other recommendations, but I wanted you to see the first two. The recommendation number four, they made a big emphasis on the fact that healthcare integration is about accessing primary physical and behavioral health at the site of when you receive service. So when you come in and you get your blood pressure taken, and you have your medications reviewed by your physician, if you've got problems with depression or problems with other types of conditions, you can receive that kind of, in an integrated clinic setting, kind of like we're doing with public health at the university clinic. And that was an important recommendation, because up until this point, the only recommendation that had been heard would be that, well, if we gave three or four insurance companies all the money, people would get better. And we tried to argue, actually, people don't get better from an insurance company in Troy or Austin, Texas, or wherever they're incorporated. They get better because when they see their doctor in Bay City, they get their behavioral health and their medical issues addressed. And that was an important recommendation. The work group came up and stood by that pretty strongly, and it was important for people to listen and recognize that, because I think most reasonable people would agree with that. And so I also included, in your information I gave you, page 14 is what its number, this was the very first recommendation of the full report. The first part of the executive summary includes some of their final recommendations, but in their first work group last year, which closed in December, they had one primary recommendation, it's 1.1. So symbolic maybe, but 1.1 is the first one. And they recognized that maintaining some kind of separation between behavioral health funding for Medicaid and physical health funding for Medicaid was important. Because, and the reason they made that recommendation is because historically, commercial insurance plans have not prioritized addiction services, they've not prioritized services to the most disabled. And that mentality would potentially be a detriment to people continuing to access public mental health services in Michigan. So that was a recommendation from the work group. It was roundly supported by us advocates and providers that were supporting that. It was contradictory to the governor's original boilerplate message for 17, but we certainly can respect the fact that the administration took time, got stakeholder feedback, got public feedback, and took and changed their position based on what people who accessed these services were really saying. So I'd like to say the story ends there. The administration did its job, it listened to the public, and it came up with a much more better proposal. In the meantime, once the work group started closing up its efforts late last year, the Medicaid health plan started aggressively lobbying people in the legislature, basically saying that this was all rigged, it was a sham. And these are words that they use, so go onto Crane's and pull some of their articles. These are things that they said. There was too many parents and consumers and providers on this, and not enough health plan representatives. And apparently, what do those folks know about how mental health services should be delivered? And so they already started kind of a, some political momentum around getting some different boilerplate proposed for fiscal year 18. And so in the last page of your information I left for you, I highlighted what was proposed this year by the governor, the new section, Section 298, and it's highlighted on the top. Talks about the work of the work group, it talks about continuing to involve stakeholders in making those policy decisions. It's very, very positive, built on all the work of the last 14 months, was very respectful of the feedback they received from the commissions. So we were very pleased to see that. The Senate, in the meantime, proposed new language, Section 234. And I highlighted the key part of Section 234, it essentially goes back to, well, we're just going to require you to transfer all the money to the Medicaid health plans by 2020. So essentially contradicts both the governor's language and what was in the work group report that had been worked on for the last 14 months. Then the House language came out a few days later, new Section 298. Dr. Canfield, who's a very thoughtful person, he proposed some language, which was pretty good. But when it gets to, if it had stopped at number three, we would have been fine. Unfortunately, in the full appropriations committee, they added number four, which I highlighted. And essentially, it mirrors the language that the Senate was proposing, which was to ignore the section recommendation 1.1 of the report and begin using pilots to transfer the Medicaid funds to the private health plans. So we were disappointed with that, because it seemed to be going contrary to what the policy discussion had been for the last year. So I wanted the commission to know that the battle isn't over. Next week, there'll be a revenue estimating conference, and the conference committee members, which will be represented from the House, the Senate, and the administration, will sit down, start airing out their differences on the budget. Surprisingly, this year, our difference is not money, it's about the boilerplate language. Usually, it's differences about dollars and cents. And when they start working on that, they will eventually come up with some kind of proposal that they'll present to the House and Senate for fiscal year 18. So we're hopeful that the administration will continue to support the work group process that it commissioned and that it led, and that some kind of language will come out of there, which will be more reflective of what the feedback was from the public, and some language that will reflect what the report recommended in December and March.
Thank you. Mr. Coonan.
Chris, how will your programs be impacted if, when the Republicans, if they're successful in repealing the Affordable Care Act, and they cut $876 billion out of Medicaid, which they're proposing to do?
Right.
How will these programs be impacted?
Well, I think it's important for people to understand that the cuts to Medicaid, one of the concerns I had about the American Healthcare Act was it should have just been an up-and-down repeal. They ran for eight years on an up-and-down repeal of Obamacare. Okay, then just do that. They tried to leave enough in there to make it sound like they were addressing people's concerns, but the way they pay for that is by cutting Medicaid by 800 billion. And what people need to remember is that 800 billion is going to come out of somebody's care. 65 percent of Medicaid is elderly and disabled people. It's not people sitting around with their feet up getting checks from the government. It's not illegal immigrants. It's people in nursing homes, it's elderly people whose families can't take care of them at home, and they're in custodial care or long-term care. That's who's going to be hit by that. The other side of it is Medicaid by far is the biggest funder of addiction services. And there's a lot of public acknowledgement about opiate problems and painkiller, prescription painkiller abuse. But if you cut 800 billion out of the one financing, the largest financer of those services, it's going to cut those services. There's no way to do, there's no way you can do it. So I'm very disappointed. And we've been on a very slow, in the first part of the information I gave you, I showed you the map of the 10 regions. And I came to the commission four years ago, was kind of saying, we didn't really like this map, but we're kind of getting our arms twisted, and we're kind of being pushed into this region five. So we've been on a slow growth, or I should say, actually, slow reduction of expenses. I think that's going to go up exponentially if Medicaid cuts go through. Because 65 percent of that is elderly and disabled people, and that's who we serve.
Commissioner Begic.
The Michigan Association of Counties Health and Human Services Committee has been looking at this 298 for the last couple of years, and we came up on our platform opposed to it, and I think we still are. Steve Curry's here with us today, he might address it also, but we've been opposed to the changes, taking out the local hands and putting into a HMO-type system. Thank you.
I would just, can I respond to that? Yeah, both MAC and the Ex- of the Sheriff's Association have been strong advocates opposing that, because they believe in maintaining the local control and county-level control of services. So we've been appreciative of that.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. Chris, let me just start out by saying how much I appreciate the time and dedication you have to bear in act behavioral health in ensuring that our constituents, our residents of Bay County are going to get as good a health source demands that they can possibly get. I hope that as time goes on and these issues continue on 298 or the repeal of Obamacare, that you'll still take the time to come back before the board and the public to make sure that we're getting in black and white exactly what's going on and how it's going to affect us, positive or negative.
Absolutely.
So thank you for taking the time. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Commissioner Krieger has said, and Commissioner Coonan as well, in terms of how well and concisely you explained here, but we need to have more of the public understand that the vast bulk of Medicaid funding is spent on people in nursing homes, children, and people who are really vulnerable, not the people that sometimes perception is about Medicaid.
That's right.
And as a former member of the Community Health Appropriations Subcommittee in the Senate in Lansing, I was very familiar with that, and I applaud, as do the commissioners, your advocacy on behalf of people who need that health insurance to protect themselves and their families. And we're glad, we're glad that you're so involved at state level as well, Chris, and you've done an excellent job for Bay and area counties, and we're glad that you're maintaining a high profile on this issue statewide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I just want to say, I think you gave us, it's almost, when I listen to it, I think of my mother when she was in a nursing home, and she had, my mother didn't have any money, you know, she had us to help out, but it's scary, the statistics are scary. You know, they basically, they just are, you know, and I agree with what you said, that, you know, a lot of people think Medicaid is people are just sitting around doing nothing. But Medicaid and Medicare do a lot, they give a lot of help to people who need help.
That's right.
And it's scary, I mean, I have trouble watching the news at night anymore, you know, because like, it's just, I'd rather watch, you know, reruns of anything than the news, because everything, nothing's good happening right now, and I want something good to happen. But I'm grateful that you bring the information to us because, and that people that are watching on Bay TV can see this, because, so they have a better idea of what we're going through, not only in the county, but as a country, you know, because, well, a lot of people just, we're not, we're not informed as well as we should be, and we need to be. But thank you so much. We need a motion to receive this report.
So move. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up, Steve Curry, Executive Director of the Michigan Association of Counties, update on MAC activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for having me here this afternoon. It was a great drive up here, we finally looked like we've got some good weather. I've got a little presentation for you that we put together, the staff put together for you, kind of goes through a summary, a quick summary on the first two pages of, you know, what your fees for service are, what are some of the programs at the association. Just to highlight something on the second page, if you look at the revenue sharing from 2016 to 2017, you'll see that there was about a $20,000 increase in county revenue sharing. We did get, in last year's budget, a 1 percent increase in county revenue sharing. We're happy to say, today, we've got a 1 percent recommendation from the Senate on top of that 1 percent from last year. And it sounds like that the House is going to agree to that 1 percent as well. So stay tuned on that, but we're pretty pleased to be able to be in front of you today and say, hey, we got a 1 percent increase last year and a 1 percent increase this year. Getting into the presentation, on the bottom of page one there, you'll see the MyCountyMatters.org website. That was something we put together about a year ago, last April. April is County Awareness Month. And we put that together to better educate folks on what counties do. What we found at the association is that many people don't understand what counties do and all the services that we provide, whether it be public health, or the sheriff's department, or the courts. Many people don't understand that. So we put this together for people to go to that site, learn about it, for you folks to use. If you're going around, you know, talking to a school group or something about what counties do, you can use that. We have flyers that you can request from us, and we can send you some flyers to hand out if you're doing any sort of presentation. So I encourage you to go to that website and check it out. On the top of page two is just one of the services that we offer. We administer Michigan Counties Worker Compensation Fund out of the MAC office. It's a nonprofit member-owned pool. Dividends last year totaled $3.1 million. We have more than 80 members in the fund, and we're proud to say that since 2014, we've given out $125,000 in loss prevention grants. So it's not necessarily something that you guys participated in at this point, it may be something you want to look at in the future, but we're pretty proud of that program. Bottom of page two kind of goes through a bunch of the other services that we offer. I'm not going to spend too much time on that, but if you're ever interested, feel free to reach out and give me a call. The top of page three references a CRC report that recently came out. If you were at our MAC conference, it was highlighted there. It kind of goes through looking at services and what services are being delivered, and how are those services being delivered. The report shows that maybe there's a better way, or more efficient way to deliver services from the county level, rather than some of the smaller townships, or smaller cities, or villages. So it talks about how those services could possibly be delivered, and how funding from those services could be, or how the county could be compensated for providing those services. So again, I think that there's a two-page executive summary, I encourage you to go there and look at that report. Now, the bottom of page three kind of talks about a new county commissioners forum we just put together. It was, it came about from our president, Shelley Taub, a suggestion from her to encourage county commissioners to kind of collaborate a little more. That's one of the big feedbacks we get from our conferences, is folks like to get together and talk. So we took advantage of technology and put together a county commissioners forum, where you can go on there, get a log, and the instructions are on your flash drive. Where you can just ask questions about what other county commissioners are doing across the state. So if you have a moment, I'd encourage you to sign up. Getting into the legislative update on the top of page four, if you look at the highlight there on the House side, there are 25 former county commissioners in the House, and 11 former county commissioners in the Senate. That's a pretty high, pretty high number, we've not seen that before. I think that's attributed to term limits, and the county commission becoming a stepping stone to the state legislature. So now, our challenge is to make sure they don't forget where they come from. Usually, after about a year and a year and a half in Lansing, they start to forget the challenges that they had on the county board. So that's part of our job, is to make sure that they don't forget the things that you have to deal with on a daily basis when they're making legislative decisions. Bottom of page four and top of page five kind of goes through the leadership. Obviously, the Senate leadership didn't change because there wasn't an election there. Bottom of page five talks about the House committees. The red indicates an ex-county commissioner's chair, the blue indicates a former county commissioner's a member. So you can see, we're well-represented on many of the House committees. The top of page six, again, goes through the Senate committees. There's a county, former county commissioner represented on all committees except the judiciary committee. So again, we're very pleased with that, and hope those folks continue to remember where they came from. Finally, getting into some of our legislative priorities, and this list is by no means exhaustive, but the first item on there kind of gets at local government financing. I'm sure you've heard about the governor's task force that he's put together to kind of look at the OPEB and pension liabilities that local units of government have out there. We are represented, represented on the task force, they're expecting to have their draft or their final report out by the end of this month. To be honest with you, I wouldn't expect too much out of it. I think you've got two very diverse groups on that board that are never going to come to any sort of agreement. So you're going to see kind of two contrasting positions on there. So it'll be up to legislators now to see what they want to do with that sort of recommendation or that task force report. What we've been doing and trying to beat the drum is that it's not just an expense issue. We cannot continue to look at this as we can cut, cut, cut our way out of it. It's got to be a revenue discussion as well, and I think that is starting to resonate. Our friends at MML have been doing it as well, at MTA, saying, hey, we cannot cut our way out of this problem, this is not a problem, that was created overnight, this has been created over 50 years, we need time to kind of, to address this going forward. So I think we may even see some different revenue options come out of, maybe not this task force, but a different group in the future. Item two is reforming tax capture statutes. This is something we've been working on for a long time. But if anyone ever tries to tell you that MAC is trying to get rid of DDAs or TIFAs or anything like that, that's not true at all. What we are looking for is some common sense reforms with them. We think that some of those that were created prior to 1994 that have the ability to renew without any sort of say from the county, there needs to be some say from the county there. We've seen some great partnerships formed between DDAs and counties on those created after 1997, whether it be startup funds, or millage matches, things like that. But we don't think a municipality can create a separate DDA without any input from the county. Those are county dollars, and they should have a say in how those kind of county dollars are used. Reforming Michigan Tax Tribunal, this kind of is a broader topic that came out of last year's dark store issue. If you remember, last year, we were successful in getting a bill passed out of the House, 97 to 11, that addressed the dark store issue, and it got at the assessing procedures in deed-restricted properties. This year, there's also, that bill has been reintroduced by Representative Materan, a former county commissioner out of Kalamazoo. And there's been another bill introduced that kind of gets at the structure and the operational function of the Michigan Tax Tribunal. There's a thought out there that maybe the folks on the tax tribunal are not as educated as they should be, or not paid as well as they should be. So we haven't taken a position on that legislation yet, but we do believe that these folks need to be educated, and maybe these cases need to go to specific tax tribunal members, the ones that are more educated in assessing, or whether, if there's a non-property tax appeal, maybe the accounting members should hear that case. So we're working on that piece of legislation as it moves through the process as well. On the top of page seven, ensuring adequate funding for Michigan court system. This gets at the Cunningham fix that we were able to get taken care of about two years ago, maybe three years ago now. That legislation sunset, so that has to get at the fees your court can charge for those people that go through the court system. That actually sunsets this fall, so we are working with legislators right now to eliminate that sunset. I think we will be successful in that. But we're also looking at having a greater discussion on courts and how they're funded, and what the relationship is between the county and the court system, and with it being a funding unit and not having much control over it. So bigger discussion there, but we're first focused on the user fee authority getting that sunset eliminated. The next item on there, improving the performance of the Child Care Fund. That came out of last year. If you remember, there was a delay in the reimbursement from the state on two counties on the Child Care Fund. We were able to help get those payments caught up. And then on top of that, the department decided that they weren't necessarily going to reimburse for all those indirect costs after the budgets were already approved. We were able to successfully get legislation passed fixing last year's budget for that issue, and now we're working on long-term legislation that would fix that going forward, so we don't have to worry about that. Again, something I, we've got good bill sponsors on both that and the court funding issue, so we look forward to getting those passed this session. And then finally, investing in Michigan's infrastructure, obviously something that's been talked about for a while. You know, there was legislation passed two years ago to somewhat address that issue. It still involves an appropriation from the legislature to do that. We have concerns about that, because of course, when you start over-appropriating a general fund, we have a big target on our back is local government. So we do believe there needs to be some sort of new funding there, whether it be a user fee-based or some sort of tax. We don't have an opinion on that, but we do believe there's, there needs to be some new funding. On the bottom of page seven there, kind of goes through many of the other issues that we cover at the association. So we run around a lot, trying to cover a lot of different committees, is what that indicates. Top of page eight, kind of goes into more detail on the tax tribunal reform, which I kind of talked about. The dark stores bill this year is 4397, so if you, if you need to follow that, I don't believe they've had a committee hearing on it yet. Bottom of page eight gets at the PPT reimbursement for this year. This was the first year for the new PPT replacement. What we have found is that many locals got an increase, or an overappropriation of their normal essential services assessment. That was guaranteed 100 percent reimbursement. What we found is, due to the complexity of the formula, many counties got above that 100 percent, which we're happy to hear. What we're even more, which we're even more glad to hear is that the legislature and the governor has said, that extra funding that came through that PPT reimbursement, we want to keep with the locals. And we may want to look at the dispersment of that, but we want to keep with the locals. So we're pretty happy with that, we're working with the administration in both chambers right now on what sort of dispersment method looks best for that. Another issue that's come up this year is the Intergent Defense Commission and the standards changes there. Those, there's been, first, four standards have been established, but they have not Those, there's been, first four standards have been established, but they have not been approved by Laura and the second set of three standards has been established and those are under review as well. They have to be approved by Laura. You don't really need to do anything yet until they're approved by Laura, except look at those costs, see if there would be increased costs to meet those minimum standards, but you do not have to implement anything until the state properly appropriates those funds. So really, that's just FYI. We don't expect that to be in this year's budget, but possibly in FY18's budget. Another issue that's been talked about is NextGen 911, kind of upgrading the system statewide. The UP is kind of leading the country on where they are at with the NextGen 911. The rest of the state needs to cap out. Just the bottom bullet there is kind of the biggest issue is to raise the surcharge from 19 cents to 25 cents and that is split between Michigan State Police and locals. That's it for the legislative update. Just some other housekeeping items. You can kind of see the MAC policy committees. You guys, Vaughn has been on our policy, one of our policy committees for a long time and now as a MAC board member, you guys are well represented at the association. You can kind of see when those other committees meet, we'd love to have you participate. You don't have to come in person. If you can't, you can Skype in if you'd like. On the bottom of page 10, that's our advocacy staff. Deana Bosworth's been the director there, on and off for a few years now. She kind of left us for a year, but has come back, so we're glad to have her on board. Chris Jones is the newest member. He came to us from the House Republican Policy Office where he worked on transportation issues and local government and general government issues for many, many years. So he's got a ton of experience there. And the top of page 11 is the MAC leadership. You have Shelley Taub, who's Oakland County Commissioner, who's president, Matthew Beerlein from Tuscola County, first vice president, Ken Borton from Otigo County, second vice president, and Jerry Doucette from Aldra County is the immediate past president. Finally, that's our Twitter and Facebook and website, if you do any of that stuff.
Commissioner Coonan. Steve, I sat in a conference call, I think it was your task force, on the OPEB, the other employment benefits. And did you mention, because you gave us a whole lot of information, did you mention that the opinion of that particular task force is rather diverse?
Well, I think we put two together. So there's the governor's appointed task force and then MAC put together a separate task force.
That's the one I said.
That's the one you, yeah, you called in on. I would say you have, all counties are different. Some are well-funded on the OPEB side, some are well-funded on the pension side, some are well-funded both. So you have diverse opinions on where fixes need to be made, but I think consensus on how to fix those things. What are some of the things that can address those issues? So I would say we had consensus internally on that.
I understand and I understand counties are at different levels of funding. I also understand that, you know, if we are to be, you know, everything stems from, you know, a grassroots effort. You know, you look at post-employment healthcare, which they want to tax, just like they taxed pensions, you know, the legislature. The Republicans want to tax post-employment healthcare. Now, that does nothing for mainstream America. If you have a small business in a local community and you take whatever it might be, $100, $200 a month out of somebody's pocket, that's disposable income. That is income that is spent locally that helps the local economy. And I don't think these folks down there, you know, like you mentioned, a lot of these folks were county commissioners, now they're down there, they forgot where they come from. And if you look at post-employment healthcare, we're looking at Medicare.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at prescription drugs. And Medicare is very, very expensive because in 2006, when they adopted Part D, they didn't fund it. So the debt increases and then they created this crazy law, the guy should be in jail, or he should be, and anybody that voted for it should be in jail. This crazy law that Medicare, which is the largest purchaser of prescription drugs, cannot negotiate with their prescription drug manufacturers for the cost of prescription drugs, therefore they pay 42 to 60% more than Medicaid and the VA. Now, I would think that would be something that if we pushed from the county level to the state level, I sent a resolution there and I don't think anybody read it. So, you know, the state legislature or MAC should be sending that to Washington saying, hey, you know, we understand, you know, they're calling, they're calling Medicare Medicaid an entitlement. People work 40, 50 years, they pay for it, then it comes time to collect and they say it's an entitlement, we're not going to give it to you or we're not going to give you that in this form, we'll give you something else. Well, you know, everybody should be screaming to Washington saying, you know, we're the purchaser, the largest purchaser of prescription drugs and yet we cannot negotiate with them. That's the craziest thing I've ever heard of in my life. And if we push from this level to Lansing and they do nothing, I mean, they've got a job to do, these folks. And everything stems from Washington regarding healthcare. So the easiest thing, and I talked to a state rep from Midland and I said, you know, you went after post-employment healthcare last session and they were unable to, they were not successful because the police were fired interceding. I said, is that something you're going to do again this year? He didn't bat an eye, well, of course. I said, why? Oh, well, it's we're going to cut costs. You know, you got the opportunity there to cut the costs at the federal level, let Medicare negotiate, therefore lowering everybody's costs. So now you don't have to go out and start taxing people's healthcare. So it does get somewhat frustrating. If I can see the problem, we can see the problem, we send it to you guys and nothing happens, I mean, it gets very frustrating.
No, and I agree with everything you're saying. I think as far as this task force goes, you know, that is a federal issue and that was a little bit outside the scope of what this task force did, was working on. They were working on, you know, OPEB liabilities and pension liabilities.
Understand.
At the state level.
Understand.
Now, that being said, I think that that would be a great topic to be brought up at our Health and Human Services Committee because that's where we can, you know, put it in our platforms. We can talk to state legislators, we can talk to NACO about it.
Is Vaughn on that?
Yep, Vaughn's on that committee, yep.
How long you been on that damn committee?
But, you know, but it is, you know, it is, it's a federal issue, so that's a whole different animal.
I know, but you've got to push.
I understand. I understand.
I would like to be on that. I would like to at least stop down.
Yeah, you would be more than, more than welcome to come into a presentation on it.
Because you know what, you're going to be taxing, you're going to be taxing people's healthcare and people are struggling and the local economy's struggling. You're going to tax people's healthcare so we can give tax breaks to businesses that Michigan is a very competitive state regarding taxes across the country. So, you know, mainstream needs some help and we represent people. We represent people that worked in the public sector. We represent people who now are going to have less disposable income because they're going to be able to do it because the executive in both houses are controlled by the Republicans and they really don't care about working people. So I would love to get down there and talk. To me, it's common sense. You know, why wouldn't they allow Medicare, the largest purchaser of prescription drugs, to negotiate? Therefore, they're saying, oh, we've got a problem with entitlements. That's how you hear it, problem of entitlements. People work from 16 to 66, 50 years, they pay for it and then when it comes time to collect, you know, we've got a problem with that. I don't buy it. And we need to be doing more. I think we've done our share here. We need to be doing more at the state level, pushing to the federal level. And anything that we can do or I can do, I'd be happy to go down there and tell them what I feel. And I think I've got some, I've got the facts supporting me. I hope I do. If not, I think I did.
Commissioner Crigger.
Thank you. Steve, thanks for coming in and we all have our little pet projects and I happen to have a couple of them. Hoping we can see a little bit more action or something being done with it. One of them falls under the septic waste. For me, it's all about the state having a septic code. You know, Bay County with our director, Joel Strauss, and Laura Olgar, environmentalists, we've been working on coming up with our own septic code, which I would hope might nudge the state, just like what we did with the phosphorus ban on fertilizers. We were told we were crazy, we pulled it off and within two years, the state then implemented that. And I'm hoping that if they're going to continue to drag their feet in Lansing, I mean, it's been almost 15 years since Patty Burkholtz put a group together to come up with some type of a code, that there's still nothing, whereas at least Joel in Bay County is trying to move forward. Because what that comes into is beach closures and it isn't just Bay County that has issues with water quality, it's all over the state. And again, it falls on the backs of the shoulders of the DEQ. There's a lot of talk, there's very little action. So I'm hoping that that could be another hot button for myself to be engaged with so that we can move these legislators along. Like you said, they get there their first year, they're all fired up. After they're there two to three years, it's a whole different ballgame. And then least but not last is wetland issues. Here we have a park that our government was allowed to take a swimming beach and turn it into a physical wetland and that's our only access to the Saginaw Bay in Bay County. So I'm hoping that maybe some other restraints can be done with the DEQ protecting private property rights. You don't have to live on the bay to have them come after your beach. You might live two miles back in the woods and next thing you know, you've got the DEQ in your driveway saying, oh, wait a minute here, this pond has these protected vegetation plants and you can't get in there to maintain that. So I'm thinking that the DEQ does have to have some direction from the public and MAC has a hammer that they can use. And I'm hoping that these three points of interest that I have, and I'm sure many other people in Bay County will at some point be readdressed and we can plan a new coming back within the next 12 months to give us an update on this.
Anytime. I'll look into both those issues and have someone kind of reach back out on.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Begic.
Citizens Research Council report, we had that forum at our conference there in the fall, in March. I was at a monitor township meeting last night and their fire barn is in dire straits, needs repair, a lot of money to replace it. The topic of a Metropolitan Fire Authority came up. There's a lot of townships out there with fire barns that are pretty old and they're still have the money to do it and if we could do it collaboratively countywide. So I told them I would bring it up, talk about a metropolitan authority. I know the locals like to keep control, but she had got to replace a fire barn, it's a lot of money. So hopefully we can maybe take a look at that down the road. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. I'd like to ask a question. You heard, you heard Mr. Pinto talk about Section 298. Does MAC have a position on this?
Yeah, we oppose any changes to 298 that reduce the local services or finances that come back. We penned a letter in collaboration with the Community Mental Health Association a few weeks ago that kind of says, hey, leave the system the way it is. That's what the work group, the task force said. Let's follow that charge and I think Chris referred to it. It's such a moving target right now. The language keeps changing almost weekly on what they want to do, who wants to do what and that sort of thing. But we are in full support of supporting local control and making sure that those services and finances stay with the locals.
I just wondered, you know, he talked about, you know, the 14th month process that they went through to come up with something like, how long? I would take it that the Senate and the House has been working on for like a couple months and they just threw this thing together.
Yeah, it's not surprising, to be honest. I mean, that's what happens sometimes down there. And we were on that task force too, so we, you know, we participated in that task for 298 task force as well, so.
I just wanted, hey, thanks for coming up here, you know, it was great, it was great to hear from you and, oh, Commissioner Crigger.
I noticed someone's hand was up on the other side of the aisle.
Oh, he's hardly breathing.
I promise I'll be very brief. Steve, nice to meet you in person. We did have a good conversation earlier this year.
Yep.
I also, like Commissioner Coonan, participated in one of the conference calls with regard to benefits for local government employees. And all I'd like to do, as I did over the phone, is say that we have a very dedicated workforce here in Bay County and I want to certainly compliment the Bay County Board and especially our Pension Board for being funded at 112% and our VBA is in good shape. And I just hope that as we move forward, if MAC works with the Snyder Administration, that we remember we have many, some county employees right in this room that have more than 30 years of service. And I think it would be a disservice to, to those employees who have dedicated their lives to grassroots government and serving the public to take away their lifetime healthcare benefits or even in the future as we move forward, since Bay County has had a very good record in terms of being fiscally prudent. As you know, counties aren't the most, we lose a lot of good people to the private sector that pays higher salaries. But in exchange for a lower salary, county employees generally have decent job security, healthcare and some kind of retirement security. I just hope you'll keep that in mind and if legislation is crafted to address the challenge that some counties are facing by being underwater on their healthcare and their pensions, that there be some flexibility in the statute for counties like Bay so that we might be able to continue to offer those benefits to recruit the kind of talent that our Bay County residents need and deserve and are getting.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing we've been very strong, strong on and that will be stated in the report that there was consensus on was one size is not going to fit all for all communities. You've got to respect those communities that have done the right things and have been able to make the payments they need to. And even to the point where your funding level may be, you know, on pension side for counties statewide is fairly good. I mean, we're in fairly good shape compared to a lot of communities. On the OPEB side, it's not as good, but that's because it was a recent Gatsby change and now it's showing up differently on your balance sheet. So you have to give communities the time to kind of look at that, how are they going to budget for it? And if they're trending in the right direction, you got to respect that as well. So we've been, that'll be a strong point in the report as well.
All set?
Yeah.
All set? Perfect. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Need a motion received?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to, at this time, I got, I have to take this, one thing, Resolution Number 217-98, sponsored by Commissioner Begic honoring Majors Michael and Shirley Myers on their retirement. I'd like to, please, a motion to adopt this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now let's move on to the reports, resolutions of committees and seeing that all in favor? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-84, crime victim rights grant from the prosecutor. I move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-85, Victims of Crimes Act, grant from the prosecutor. I move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-86, Civic Arena Munsters Unit Repairs and Parts Replacement from Recreation and Facilities. I'd like to move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Begic.
I was over at Dick Samotzky's viewing today and, you know, he, the Civic Arena was a big part of it and talked to his wife and his son and said, you know, paid it off and taken care of it and it was a big, big project for him.
Yeah, he was one of the big pushers behind it, that's for sure. Anyone else? Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-87, Amendment Number Three to Comprehensive Planning, Budgeting and Contracting Agreement from the Health Department. I'd like to move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-88, Amendment Number Three to Agreement DFA 16-09001 with the Department of Health and Human Services. I'd like to move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-89, Payables General in Center Ridge Arms. I'd like to move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-90, Budget Adjustment Various from the Finance Department. I'd like to move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
2017-91, 2018 Budget Calendar from Finance. I'd like to move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-92, Bay Metro Support and Services Agreement from the ISD. I'd like to move this forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, from Ways and Means.
Commissioner Ryder, Personnel and Human Services, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution Number 2017-93, waiver of ordinance adoption process to amend Bay County Employees Retirement System Ordinance. I'll move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Okay. Okay, okay. Yeah, we all got a copy of the question, okay? Where were we? Oh, did we all in favor yet? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
We have Resolution, Resolution 2017-94, Bay County Employees Retirement System Ordinance Amendment for the Sheriff and UnderSheriff Positions. I move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Same sign. Motion carries.
Resolution 2017-95, Data Service Agreement with Great Lakes Health Connection. I would move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Same sign. Motion carries.
And finally, Resolution 2017-96, vacancies in new positions, Department on Aging, 911, Center Dispatch, and Health Department. I would move those forward.
Support.
There's been one, and there's one position added to, that, on B, you all have that in front of you, from the Division on Aging, Case Management Worker. And the Sheriff Department, Road Patrol was added to that until, so.
With that added, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Krieger.
Just, just a question. I know that we lost a person that headed that division up. Has there been any progress? Do we have any candidates?
The agenda closed yesterday. That would be on the Personnel and Human Services Agenda for May, before June. But it just goes yesterday.
Did you get support for that?
Very good.
The last one.
Thank you.
All set?
We're good, thanks.
Perfect. Any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Same sign. Motion carries.
That's all we have before you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And next, Board of Commissioners, back to Commissioner Durancheck.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution 2017-97, MSU Extension, 100th Anniversary. This resolution will be presented at the May 16 Personnel and Human Services Committee Meeting. I'd like to move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
Before the meeting, I believe it's from 1 to 4, they're having an open house, I believe, downstairs too. Is it 1 to 4? 1 to 4. So if you have time, see what MSU Extension is all about, downstairs. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
That date doesn't work for them.
Okay. Just so we know, it'll be, it'll be presented on a different date, but we'll, they'll still get it. But they will, they will get it. Any more discussions? Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Same sign. Motion carries.
2017-99, Reports of the County Executive. I'd like to move that forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Perfect. Mr. Barsha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already, this is my third time speaking, don't want to go on too long today, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't offer our sincere thanks to all who helped to make Bay County's Empty the Shelter Day on Saturday, April 29, a complete success. All About Animals Rescue transported our shelter animals to and from their facility for spaying and neutering, and any needed vaccinations before the event. On Saturday morning, every cat and dog in our shelter was adopted to a forever home, without any fees. And so I want to offer again my thanks to the Board of Commissioners, and I know on behalf of the people of Bay County, especially the people who adopted animals, for approving our shelter's participation in this event, and waiving our normal adoption fees. The cooperative efforts of our dedicated animal control staff, and tireless volunteers, this successful event would not have been possible. And I want to offer a special thanks to Debbie Russell, Mike Halsted, and Joe Bowman, who coordinated the event on the 29th of April. And it was a complete success, and hopefully, odes well for the future for our animal shelter here in Bay County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Miscellaneous. Commissioner Krieger.
Actually, it's partly announcements, so we kind of jumped the gun a little bit. Again, we're coming to the middle, almost the end of May, believe it or not. Labor Day's just around the corner, which means we'll soon be into June. On the 24th of June, we have our Beach Wellness Event out at State Basin Recreation Area. But what I'd like to do is, to get set up for it, so we have a good count of individuals, we're going to have a, a little party, where you have the ability to show up and pre-register. So this pre-registration party will be held at Coonan's Irish House. And if you do come out at that date, not only will you have the opportunity to pre-register to make life a little easier, but you'll also have the option of a hot dog and a cold drink, whether it be Coke or Coke, or maybe a little root beer, huh, Kim? So, just trying to get the word out, we're coming up on a big day, and there's a chance to pre-register without having to go online, in case you don't have the ability to surf the web.
I love our weekly reminders, trust me, people like me need those things. Commissioner Durancheck.
I have a couple announcements too. Connect Michigan Committee is being formed now. I've got a couple candidates already on it. If it's someone, you don't have to be a politician, or a board member, or anything else, but if anyone wants to be involved out there in the audience, now's your chance. You can get ahold of me, or Debbie Russell, and she will provide, you know, get it to me. Nature Festival at the park has been going, at the county park has been going good with the 4th graders. We've run about three sets, three classes through there so far, and everything's good. Yesterday morning, we had a early morning tour, and some, kind of, you don't see them every day, white pelicans flew over, so that was pretty, that was pretty neat. This evening, at 6:45, we're having an evening walk along the trails out there too, for anyone that feels like they need a little exercise. And I think, oh, and I would be remiss, Saginaw Rescue and Dog Rescue, May the 19th, has a fundraiser at the Horizon Center, reason I say my daughter's involved, so. And Tiffany rescued a dog, so, thank you. And, but anyway, May the 19th, they have a little fundraiser out there, so we've got to help with the pets wherever they are. And happy birthday, Mrs. Barsha.
Happy birthday, my granddad.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I wanted to ask you, the people talk about Connect Michigan again, so that's a lot of people in your, in your area, in the northern, northwestern sector, plus Merritt Township too.
And it's not just Township, it's not just for those that are, even in Bay City, and that there are places that are underserved. If we want to get jobs, and good jobs in here, we've got to be able to have an internet, you know, available that can run at speeds that's needed for business, not this slowed-down, throttled-back stuff that most places have, you know, this is what's offered right now, and that's not sufficient.
Right. And I agree, and so if anybody, and anybody that sees this, I want, you said they could get ahold of you, and, you know, put them on the committee.
And what the whole idea behind it is to, you know, figure out where's lacking, and what we actually could use, and then go out after providers. Just last week, the federal government signed a contract, six and a half billion dollars with AT&amp;T for 25 years, to provide first net service. And what that's going to do is bring high-speed internet to first responders. But also, in the, in the ruling and everything there, from what I read, it's a lengthy deal, but they also are provided for private and public use of these new lines that are being going in. So now's our chance, and we need to figure out exactly what is needed, or what we could use, and then maybe help the company, you know, provide it to all our citizens, not just first responders.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just, you know, we all got this, we all, one thing we've got to put out here yet, we need a motion to receive the letter from Hampton Township on the notification that they rescinded their golf cart resolution, or whatever.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And one of, and I just wanted to say, happy birthday, Mrs. Barsha, and Commissioner Durancheck. You know, you know, Mrs. Barsha and I, you know, graduated together, but she held up in time a lot better than I did.
And I'm one year ahead of you. But we were both Mother's Days gifts.
But, but happy birthday to both of you.
Mr. Harry, thank you very much, Chairman. And just so everybody knows, that somehow around over the tiny second, this office just, a group of people came up with a cake, and I think that both of our names are on it, so I'm going to take a piece of cake when this is over. There's one in there.
We'll, we'll see if we have time, I've got to go walk a door yet, tonight. But thank you.
You can eat yours, Mike.
All right.
Okay. Let's go to appointments. In June, we have Library Board, one five-year term. In October, Land Bank Authority, one local unit of government, represented a three-year term. Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, one three-year term. And the Board of Canvassers, two four-year terms. And in December, we have Division on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms in districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. Is there any need for a closed session today?
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Richard.
See you, Tom.
See you, buddy.